Good evening. This is Bob Jorgensen. I'm the Vice Chair of the Planning Commission. I like to call the regular meeting of the Planning Commission to order for December 9th, 2020. Could we have a roll call, please?
Good evening, Chair and Planning Commissioners. This is Megan Wilbanks, Deputy City Clerk, and I'll call the roll. Commissioner Hopkins?
Here.
Commissioner Khan?
Here.
Commissioner Quincy?
Here.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Here.
Commissioner Wolken will be absent. And Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Here.
And let the record reflect that Chair Dandakar is also absent.
Okay. Well, thank you, and let the record reflect that Commissioners are present through teleconferencing. I'd like to remind my fellow Commissioners that, and staff, to help us reduce background noise by muting your phone or microphone unless you are speaking. Now, let's turn to the Pledge of Allegiance. I see a flag, so I'm gonna jump in. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." We're here. So, first item is consideration of the minutes. Anyone have comments on the minutes? So... Mute yourself, unmute yourself, and here we go. We'd like to make a motion then to approve.
I'll move to approve.
Steve Khan is moving to approve. Is there a second?
That was Nick.
Nick. Nick is seconding?
No, no. Nick made the motion.
Okay, and there are no other comments at all. Will the Deputy City Clerk please call the roll call?
So just to clarify, Commissioner Quincy made the motion, and I didn't catch who seconded?
Oh, I thought Commissioner Khan made the motion.
I know. I seconded the motion Mr. Quincy, Commissioner Quincy made.
I'm sorry?
It's all right.
I had my... A part of the screen was covered up, and I actually didn't see it. So, there we go. Are we ready to vote? All in. Will you call the roll call, please, Deputy City Clerk?
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes. So, the motion to approve the minutes carries. Now, we move to public comment. And this comment section is for items that are not on tonight's agenda. Items raised in this particular segment are generally referred to staff, and if action by the Commission is necessary, they may be scheduled for a future meeting. So, I also want to mention, for those of you who are watching this, that as you can see on the screen, participants of the webinar may submit a "question" in quotes containing their name and the item number they wish to speak on. Once public comment for the item is opened, your microphone will be unmuted, and you will have three minutes to speak. Deputy City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
At this time, we do not.
Okay, so I'm hearing that there are none. We'll move on. So now, we're gonna move to our public hearings. And there's an announcement right at the beginning of that. Any court challenge to an action taken on public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to considering only those items raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Consultant and project presentations are limited to six minutes. So, now, we're gonna move to item two of the agenda, the first public hearing. It's a project located at 830 Orchid Road. And our recommendation here is a draft resolution to approve the project. So, I'd like to now ask each Planning Commissioner if they have had any ex parte disclosures of contact with anyone who's provided information at the Planning Commission, not on the record, so that the information may be used as part of their decision-making process. Is there anyone who's had an ex parte communication? I'm looking and seeing some... It's moving. Good. So, we'll move on then. Would Associate Planner Kyle Bell please present the project? Hi, Kyle.
Hi, thank you. Do I have the right screen shown with the presentation loaded?
Looks like it from here.
Ah, perfect. Okay, everything is going right. All right, good evening. Tonight, we'll be reviewing the continued review of a mixed-use project consisting of 15 residential units and 1,500 square feet of commercial space. Project includes a minor use permit for consideration of a mixed-use development within this commercial services zone. As mentioned, tonight's recommendation is to approve the project and adopt the draft resolution subject to findings and conditions for consistency with the general plan, community design guidelines, and zoning regulations. Project site is located along Orchid Road, mid-block between McMillan and Duncan Intersections. As stated, the project site is located within the commercial services zone. The existing site is developed with a single-family residence and a detached garage that are proposed for demolition. Project site is bordered by creeks along the west property line and is surrounded by commercial service uses to the north, east, and west. To the south, across Orchid Road, we have the residential and mixed-use developments known as Avivo Townhomes and Twin Creek Mixed-Use Development. As outlined in the staff report, the project consists of three new three-story residential structures and a one-story commercial structure, which the whole project, as I mentioned, consists of 15 units and 1,500 square feet of commercial space. The project includes a 25% density bonus by providing 7% of the units dedicated for very low-income households. However, the project is only utilizing 5% of the density bonus to achieve the density that applicant has requested, thereby foregoing the 20% of the density bonus afforded to the project. Associated with the density bonus request includes a request for a concession to relax the development standards for the creek setback requirement to allow a minimum two-foot setback where 20 feet is normally required. The project also includes requests to allow residential uses on the ground floor within the first 50 feet of the structure along the street frontage, and a request for a 10% parking reduction to reduce the required parking by three spaces by providing 15 additional basic parking spaces on-site. The project was previously reviewed by the A R C and TRU Committee, where conditions and directional items were recommended to the Planning Commission for further consideration. On October 14th, the project was reviewed by the Planning Commission in consideration of the A R C and TRU Committee's recommendations and decided to continue the project at a date uncertain, so that the applicants and staff could address three additional directional items regarding the affordable units and additional direction regarding the common open space along the creek. Directional item one was intended for the applicant to provide a comparable mix of affordable units that is more equitable in comparison to the market rate units. This was in response to Housing Outlet Policy 4.2, which states affordable units shall be comparable in size, appearance, and basic quality to market rate units. The applicant responded by reducing the affordable housing income thresholds from low to very low income while maintaining the density bonus to achieve the desired density for the project. State law and the city zoning regulations state that dedicating 5% of the base density units for the project as affordable for low-income households qualifies the project for a 20% density bonus. The project actually provides 7% of the project as affordable for very low-income households, resulting in a density bonus of 25%. The applicant has designated one of the one-bedroom dwelling units as affordable units for very low-income households, which is of the same size, appearance, and basic quality to the market rate one-bedroom dwelling unit, which is in compliance with General Plan Policy 4.2. Directional items two and three were in reference to the creek and open space area to enhance the creek as an amenity for the project for the residential uses. The applicant has expanded the open space area by moving the fence area towards the creek to include a new bench for direct enjoyment of the creek. The applicant's presentation includes additional renderings and information regarding the changes to this whole area. And that actually concludes this presentation. Let me know if there's any questions.
Let me ask, I'll go alphabetically to ask each of you Commissioners if you have any questions. Commissioner Hopkins?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Khan?
One question. Are we gonna have a presentation by the applicant?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Commissioner Quincy?
I don't have any questions.
Commissioner Shoresman?
No, thank you. No questions.
And I have no questions either. Deputy City Clerk, are there any public comments on this item?
At this time, nobody's indicating that they'd like to speak. I'll keep an eye on it if anything does come in, though.
Okay. So, actually, I think we should have heard the applicant presentation at this point. So, are we... Kyle, can you? And Megan, can you make that happen?
Yep. So, Kyle's gonna run the presentation for them, and we have Charles Ashley and Brian Ridley on the call. So, I'll go ahead and unmute their microphones.
Good evening. This is Brian Ridley. Am I audible?
Yes, we can hear you. And Charles, I've unmuted yours, but you're self-muted, so if you can turn your microphone on, then we'll be able to hear you.
Thank you. I am here. Thank you very much.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Well, Kyle, if you have a a brief presentation to pull up, that would be appreciated.
I am working on it. It doesn't seem to wanna open. So, give me one quick moment.
No problem.
And Kyle, if it helps, I have it up on my screen as well. I can transfer it back.
Yeah, it's asking me to save it to my hard drive here instead of using the shared drive.
Okay. I'm just gonna bring it back to my screen, and you guys can just tell me when you're ready to advance.
All right. I am ready to go. So, this is Brian Ridley from Bracket Architecture Office, project architect for 830 Orchid Mixed-Use. Good evening, Commissioners. Appreciate your time this evening. Our presentation is brief and sort of just piggybacks a little bit on the information provided to you just now by Kyle Bell. Next slide, please. So, this site plan was included here just to give you the opportunity to identify the the two one-bedroom units. So, they're at the sort of both ends of the long building along the west side of the site, so the bottom portion of the site plan as you look at the screen. And so, either Unit 1, which fronts along Orchid Road, or Unit 9, which is near the rear of the project, would be designated as the very low-income unit. At this point, we have not made any, a specific designation and sort of find that there's sort of cases to be made for either unit, I think. So, the front unit is a little more visible, perhaps has more expansive views, but is a little bit noisier being close to the street, while the one at the rear of the project is a little bit more cozy and private. Otherwise, the main points of this project have remained the same from the last time we spoke about it from a density perspective, building area perspective, and overall architectural design. Next slide, please. So, this updated landscape plan is the broad overview of the entire site. And from here, we could sort of focus in on that upper sort of middle portion between Building D and Building C. If we could go to the next slide, we have an enlarged plan. And so, this area really identifies the different landscape elements and outdoor spaces that are along the Ephemeral Drainage Channel to the east. And so, the common courtyard is intended primarily for residents, but since this is a mixed-use site, it's not exclusive, and so we have not separated it by fencing. Basically, the entire site is intended to be open and flexible in that way. Restaurant uses are not proposed for this site. We don't have the parking for them, and so we don't anticipate that the courtyard will be dominated by restaurant use. And we figure that during business hours, weekdays, the courtyard would maybe be more used by the commercial uses, while in the evenings and weekends, it would be for residential uses, which is really kind of the mixed-use ideal. Along the length of the creek, we have all of our shade tree plantings, which are the coast live oaks, which replace the eucalyptus trees that are in there now and are a good complement to our local landscape. We also have a variety of screen shrubs along the way there, and the goal with that is to provide a vegetative screening to look across the creek area, since across the way is quite industrialized. And then, at the common courtyard, we're utilizing accent trees, the Western Redbuds and Golden Spirit Smokes, to really anchor both sides of that common courtyard. And there is a bench now that's been added to the end of that where the fence line has sort of pushed out to the property line to provide a little bit of a a sitting spot, if you will, along the edge. If you could go to the next slide. So, this is just one of two views. So, this has been updated from before. There's the concrete pavers interspersed with the ground cover for sort of a passive area. And then, there's the bench at the end along with the accent trees. And then, the next slide, if you don't mind going there, shows a view from the bench looking more toward the north. And really, I think the views along that, that side of the project are perhaps more are a bit nicer, actually, sort of in parallel to the drainage area as opposed to directly across it. If you go to the last slide, we just have a couple of photos showing the industrialized context across that way. So, you can see the building across the way there is metal siding, fairly unarticulated aside from the changes in color. And, you know, it's about 20 feet in height at least. So, the efforts have really been to sort of provide screening for that and provide focus on what we would call our side of the drainage channel. So, those are our slides, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have. We look forward to an approval for the project.
Thank you. Let me ask Commissioners, I'll just go alphabetically again if you have any questions of the applicant. Commissioner Hopkins?
I have no questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Khan?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Quincy?
Just one question. Can you repeat the two areas that you were thinking about putting the affordable unit? I think I, my thing skipped out.
Sure. The affordable unit, the very low income, will be one of the two one-bedroom units. So, it's at either end of Building A. So, Building A is the long one that runs north-south along the building. So, in this drawing, it's at the bottom of the site plan. And so, the bottom left corner would be Unit 9, and the bottom right corner is Unit 1.
Okay. And then, the street is
To your right.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Shoresman, do you have any questions?
I don't.
And I don't have any questions either. So, I'll bring it back to the Commission for deliberation. Are there any further comments before we move on this project? Mr. Khan?
Thank you. I'm in favor of this project, but I'll just tell you a couple of things that really I like. I am a creek person. I've always been a creek person. I'm not super in favor of buildings being in the creek setback. I understand the density of the project and putting them there. But just in general, I'd like to see the creek setback. And I don't think the shared common space is really gonna be used by the residents. That little concrete thing in between the commercial space and the buildings. I just don't see someone wanting to come over there and grab a chair and read a book on a Sunday afternoon. That's just my opinion. So, anyway, I'm probably gonna vote yes for this project, but those are the two things that could have been done better on the design.
Any other comments?
None. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have a quick comment.
Commissioner Hopkins?
Thank you. So, I, I think with a project of the scalability is 15 units, I'm, it's, I think it's good to see them all by family, being able to work for that size, especially with the integration of a very low-income unit. It's comparable, as we noted last time. So, I'm excited to see that change, and we'll support the project. Thank you.
Do you wanna make a motion while you're at it?
Happy to. Like to make a motion to approve staff's recommendation to find the project consistent with the general plan, community design guidelines, and zoning regulations to approve the project, subject to findings and conditions.
There's a motion by Commissioner Hopkins. Is there a second?
I have a, I have a question of staff.
Okay.
Are we, are we legally allowed to determine which unit is the very low-income unit?
Yes, you would be able to make that determination, and I think staff is open to either, either the one-bedroom units being dedicated. So, we could make that call today and incorporate that into the resolution if so desired.
Okay. Well, I would second the motion with the condition that that unit be the unit on the backside of the project, not a street-facing unit.
Number nine, looks like.
And I'll accept that amendment. Thank you, Commissioner.
So, we have a motion and a second to approve the project with a added condition that the very low-income unit be Unit Number 9. Great. Is there further discussion? Anyone else? Anything else to add to this? I'll just say quickly that I think the location is good for the housing. I'm still concerned about the low level of amenities for the folks that live there. And I hope it works out. So, I think we'll, oh, let's, let me go back and, because I should have done this at a little different time. Sorry about that. Deputy City Clerk, I asked early for a public comment, but it was really early even before the applicant's presentation. Do you wanna check again to be sure if there was any public comment?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I've been watching the attendee queue, and nobody has submitted questions indicating they'd like to speak, and there are no hands raised either.
Okay. Well, then, would you please call the roll for this motion?
Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes. So, the motion is passed, and the project is approved, subject to the findings and conditions of approval. So, we're ready then to move on to the third item, which is the project at 600 Tank Farm Road. And the purpose here is for us to provide directions to the applicant and the staff on the scope and on the environmental issues, but not on the project itself. So, with that, let's jump right in. And I wanna ask again about ex parte disclosures. So, I'm gonna ask if any of you have any disclosures about communication contact you've had with anyone who's provided information on this project. I'm seeing heads shaking no. I'm not seeing any yeses. So, we'll move on then. Associate Planner Kyle Bell, you're on again. I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Tonight, I will be passing the reins over to John Reckenbach, who is our contract planner for this project. I will be navigating the slides, so hopefully I'm sharing the right screen here. Can you confirm that you're seeing the presentation?
It looks right there, Kyle.
Okay, great. I will go ahead and pass it off to John.
All right. Thanks, Kyle. Thanks, Mr. Chair, members of the Commission. Tonight, yes, it's, it's a scoping meeting for the Environmental Impact Report to be prepared for the 600 Tank Farm Road project. The Planning Commission did see this project conceptually in September along with other advisory bodies after the Council had authorized an environmental impact report to be prepared back in April. So, the application is coming and has responded to a lot of the issues that were raised by the different advisory bodies. And now, it's time to do environmental review on that project under the California Environmental Quality Act. Go ahead, Kyle. Next slide. So, tonight, yes, tonight, we're gonna receive comments. Just go back to for a second. There you go. Tonight is the time to receive comments from the public, from different organizations or anybody who's interested in the contents of what the Environmental Impact Report should contain. It's not about the merits of the projects, not about whether you like it or not. It's not even about potential redesigns or any other issues you might wanna add to it. It's really an opportunity for staff and the consulting team to listen and use that to help determine what the final scope of the document would be. Tonight, we have Chris Burzbock from RingCon Consultants, who's the consultant who's going to be preparing the Environmental Impact Report. He'll be giving a presentation in the middle of what I'm gonna be doing after a few of these slides. Next slide. So, tonight, I wanna just quickly go over what the project is. And then, I'll turn it over to Chris to tell you a little bit about the secret document itself, what the process is, what the issues we're looking at about the initial study that's been prepared, and how public input will affect that. And then, he'll turn it back to me, and I'll go over what the next steps in the agenda would be. Next slide. Okay, the project is a fundamentally mostly a residential project, though it's a mixed-use project. 280 residential units, 240 of which would be high-density units, 40 of which would be mixed-use units, along with 12,500 square feet of commercial office space. It's on a site a little under 12 acres, right next to Acacia Creek on the north side of Tank Farm Road, here where Santa Fe Road comes into it. It also would be required to do about an acre of off-site transportation improvements as part of the project. It's within the airport area-specific plan and thus subject to regulations and that as well as the general plan. The project is requesting, in terms of entitlements, is a general plan amendment to change the land use designation to allow the project that's proposed from business park to commercial service. It would amend the airport area-specific plan accordingly. There'd be a development agreement that would essentially lock in what could be built in exchange for what improvements would need to be made. And it goes into the nitty-gritty of how the project is actually going to be implemented. That's also an entitlement that the Council would have to consider. There'd be a conceptual site plan and a minor use permit with that. Next slide. This shows you briefly where it is. As I noted, it's in the southern part of the city on the north side of Tank Farm Road. The figure at the right shows its relationship to Acacia Creek, which is essentially the eastern boundary of the site, which, as I said, is about 12 acres. Next slide. To the north, you've got the Damon Garcia Sports Fields, Acacia Creek to the east, along with mixed-use residential development at 650 Tank Farm Road. To the south, you've got Tank Farm Road itself and undeveloped land across that. And to the west, it's on the undeveloped Chevron property. Next slide. This shows the site plan in a bit more detail, turned on its side. So, now, north is to the right and west is to the up, if that makes sense. The project would be developed, as you can see, with the residential primarily away from Tank Farm Road, the commercial areas closest to Tank Farm Road. In part, that design responds to compatibility issues in terms of traffic and noise. The creek here is on the southern side, or, I'm sorry, eastern side, lower side of the picture here. And so, there'd be an interface there that we have to design with in terms of minimizing any environmental impacts associated with that creek. Next slide. I don't wanna go into a lot of detail about this, but this shows that there would be off-site roadway improvements associated with the project, or also associated with the Chevron project. So, there's some question about how that's implemented. But for the purposes of the E I R, we are going to look at these things as if they have potential, whatever the potential impacts of what these off-site improvements might be, both Tank Farm Road, including a roundabout right there that goes into the project site itself. Next slide. This again gets to project phasing. We're looking at two basic phases to get you to the two hundred eighty units. Generally speaking, the first phase in the center of the site away from Tank Farm Road. And with a potential connection, as you see, on a bridge that's off the site that would allow direct connection over to development to the east. Excellent. So at this point, what I'd like to do is hand it over to Chris Burzbock, who will run you through the regulatory aspects. Of the project under the California Environmental Quality Act. And why we're here tonight, talking about the issues that we're already. Going to be looking at for sure and then soliciting input from those who might have other suggestions about what we need to look at, so. Over to you, Chris.
Thank you, John. Thank you, Vice Chair Jorgensen, members of the Commission. My name is Chris Burzbock. I'm an environmental planner with Rincon Consultants. And we're under contract to the city to assist with preparation of the environmental impact report for this project. So as John discussed in his introduction, staff have determined that the mixed use project is going to require an environmental impact report. In compliance with the California Environmental Quality Act or SEQA. SEQA is first and foremost a public disclosure law. It's meant to ensure that the public stakeholders and decision makers have the opportunity to fully review the potential environmental effects of an action such as approval of new development project like the one before us this evening. Next slide, please. So in the air will include three key components that we want to highlight, so we can understand why we're why we're here tonight. First, the EIR discloses the potential environmental effects a project may have on the environment. The EIR will consider the project's physical effects. Social or economic effects, while important to the planning commission and city council's ultimate determination about a project. Are explicitly not treated as environmental impacts for the purposes of SEQA review. Second, for each impact in the EIR, we will also identify feasible mitigation measures to reduce that impact. In that sense, going through the environmental review process is an opportunity for public input to improve a project from an environmental perspective. Third, the EIR will compare the project and any environmental effects to a range of feasible alternatives to the project. The purpose of this alternatives analysis is to help stakeholders understand what. Fundamental changes to a project would be necessary to avoid any significant environmental impacts that are identified in the EIR. And then ultimately, the EIR has to be certified by the city council prior to a project being approved. Next slide, please. This slide shows the steps of the environmental review process. The main takeaway here is to understand that we are currently at the beginning of this process. Our goal tonight is to get input on any topics that need to be evaluated in the EIR that we are kind of initiating preparation of. When the scoping period concludes at the end of this month, we'll incorporate what we hear tonight alongside the broad range of topics that are required by statute to be addressed in the EIR. And we'll prepare a draft document that would be circulated for a forty five day public review period. After public review, we'll prepare a final EIR that responds to the public's input. Including making any revisions or updates to the EIR that are necessary to address public concerns or questions. And then, once the EIR has gone through these steps, it can be reviewed by the planning commission again and certified by the city council, who can then approve the project if that is their judgment. Next slide, please. For this project, staff elected to prepare a detailed initial study, which has been released alongside the notice of preparation for review during this scoping period. The initial study is a preliminary analysis of the full range of environmental topics that are required to be analyzed in an EIR. The purpose of the initial study is to help focus the EIR on environmental topics that are key for this specific project. This initial analysis identified several environmental issue areas that either would not be impacted by this project. Or which would be fully addressed through compliance with existing federal, state or city regulations. And all of the topics that are not explicitly identified in the initial study as less than significant. Are going to be evaluated in the EIR and these topics are are shown on the next slide. So what we see here are the topics that were identified in the initial study is requiring analysis in the EIR for this project. Various standalone reviews and analyses for these topics are currently underway by both city staff and by the applicant team. And the findings of those analyses will be incorporated into the EIR alongside independent review performed by Rincon subject matter experts and the city's department leads. Importantly. This list that we're looking at right now is subject to review through the scoping process that we're currently engaged in. So if specific environmental concerns are raised during the scoping period that are not considered in the initial study, those environmental concerns would also be addressed in the EIR. And with that, I'm going to turn the presentation back over to John for the last couple of slides to wrap us up.
Hey, Chris. So next slide here. So tonight, it's all about receiving public comments. What would be the most useful to Chris and his team? Would be that the comments focus not on, I don't like this project, but instead focus on things like. This is an issue I think we need to address in the EIR. And then in in many cases, those issues will already have been tagged in the initial study and that's fine. But there may be cases someone brings up an issue that has validity and wasn't tagged in the initial study and that's what Chris is looking for. It's also an opportunity for people to consider or have the EIR consider a range of any kind of mitigation measures or. Good ideas that might address one or another impact that could be considered in the EIR. And then finally, if anyone has any ideas about the kinds of alternatives that may be appropriate to look at. Which is to say nuances of differences of the project or just things that might be useful for considering. The whole point of the alternatives analysis is to look at different options for development that might reduce one or another significant environmental impact. And that's an important point. It's not to look at any alternative, but ones that actually reduce identified impacts in one one fashion or another. Next slide. So the actual next steps on this, the the initial study went out for public review. Toward the end of November, it goes out for thirty days and during that period. And we're in the middle of that right now, but that's the NOP scoping period. That's the time when. Anybody can write in, anybody can listen tonight, anyone can speak and say, this is what we think ought to be in the EIR. That comment period closes on December twenty eighth. So it's great holiday seasonal activity for this time of year. And then the next thing that'll happen. The city will consider those comments and may or may not update the EIR scope. If there's anything new and and rises to the need to consider in the EIR. A draft EIR will then be prepared. That'll take a little bit of time. My guess is by the time it goes through review internally and gets out on the street. That that won't be out until sometime in. Very early spring, somewhere in that area. We're looking down the road a little bit. Then there's a forty five day public comment period on that draft EIR. And during that time, people can. Write in comments about the analysis. It's the second opportunity to look at the contents of what was actually reviewed. And then the EIR prepares will have to respond to those comments along with city staff. And all that with any changes to the EIR that are necessary. Become the final EIR and that's the basis for the environmental document that's ultimately considered for certification. And would be form the basis for project approval if it's approved. And that's the process. And so we're looking at a few months down the line by the time we get to there. Next slide. So here we are. How do you submit your comments? Well, as I said, we're in the middle of the public scoping period. You need to submit them by the end of the day, meaning midnight, December twenty eighth. And there's different ways you can do it. You can speak tonight, you can submit a written comment tonight, you could write a letter or an email to the city. Anyway, you can get your expressions across. Anything that's addressed to the city should be addressed to Kyle Bell and we have the address there. But I'll just say it in case anyone's just listening and can't see this. That's at the Community Development Department, nine nineteen Palm Street. In San Luis, nine three four oh one, or you can email him at KBEL, K B E E L. KBLL, thank you, at slowcity, S L O C I T Y dot O R G. And that's it. So at this point, I'd like to turn it back to the Commission to handle the public input on the project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Your names both in and Bach. I assume there's a duet, quite a duet we heard tonight.
Yes.
So Commissioners, do you have any questions? At at this point, questions of staff. I can ask you just quickly, real quickly, Commissioner Hopkins?
I have no questions at this time. Thank you.
Commissioner Khan?
I have no questions.
Commissioner Quincy?
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Shoresman?
No questions.
And I have no questions either, so that allows us to. Move to the applicant presentation. Kyle, are you? In charge of this part or does this is this really? Do we have an applicant presentation?
The applicant doesn't have a presentation for this evening, but Steve Peck is the representative of the applicant's team. Megan, I don't know if you want to unmute his mic and let him just say a few words and and then we can move on to the public comments. That'd be great.
Absolutely. So Stephen, I've unmuted your mic, but you're self muted. And it looks like your mic is still self muted, so if you can go on. Your control panel, there'll be a red microphone icon. At the top corner. Once it turns green. There we go.
There we go. I'm sorry.
No problem.
Again, Stephen Peck representing the applicant. We're pleased to be here tonight. Ready to listen along with Chris from Rincon and John and Kyle. On any suggestions on the environmental document. For the, as the Commission may know, we've submitted a number of technical studies that have gone through. Couple rounds of review by the city and the consultant team. I think we're pretty close to understanding the scope of the environmental issues. But are we listening tonight for anything additional that may need to be addressed? With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions you have on the project or. Anything we might be able to contribute to the discussion tonight. So Commissioners, are there any questions? For that brief presentation? You can maybe just nod, you don't have to call everybody. I don't see. Commissioner Shoresman?
Yeah, I just have one and I guess this is sort of a reiteration from the conversation that I had earlier with Kyle, but. Kyle, can you go back a few slides to the list of factors? That listed. Different aspects. That might be reviewed in the EIR. I think you probably know which one I'm talking about. That one, yeah. So just just for my clarification. My understanding from our conversation today is that these are all the environmental issues that will be reviewed regardless of any additional public comment. These are sort of the the automatic boilerplate ones that will be reviewed and then anything else that that comes up based on public comment will be added to this list.
That's correct.
Okay. That's that's the only clarification I wanted to ask.
Thank you. So can I ask the Deputy City Clerk for public comments? Or any public comments?
Thank you, Chair. So we have a number of folks in the attendee queue. At this time, nobody's indicating that they'd like to speak, but I'll go ahead and just change. The screen sharing back over to mine, so in case they needed a reminder of how to submit that public comment. So like it shows on here, you can raise your hand to get my attention or you can submit the question. Anything to just show that you'd like to comment. All right, and I'm not seeing anything, Chair.
Okay, well, I'll bring it back to the Commission. So are there any comments or discussion before we move to a motion? Commissioner Khan?
Yeah, I see circulation is not on the list and is that because? The circulation element of the general plan is already certified in an environmental document and this just builds on it? This is a question for Kyle. Or.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'll I'll answer it in a broad sense, but I'll let Chris answer the technical aspect of it. The regulations that. That govern how to look at transportation impacts in EIRs have changed recently. To go away from the classic level of service type of approach. And in doing so, it has really changed the the game on how to look at this. And for that reason, in that basic reason. The initial study was able to determine from a SEQA standpoint, traffic impacts would be less than significant. Chris can explain why. But that doesn't mean there won't be a traffic study for which there may be needed improvements as a result. But that's a separate process from the SEQA process. Chris, you might want to add to that.
I'm happy to add to that as much as the Commission wants to hear. I'm not sure how far down the rabbit hole of this, anybody wants me to go, but. John's summary is correct. There is a transportation study that is. Basically identical to what the Commission would usually expect to see for a project of this type that is currently being prepared. And so that will be part of the process for the project overall. But there's been a separation of how or what specific transportation. Issues are legally considered environmental impacts under the California Environmental Quality Act, so that has been. More limited and as a result of that, and that change is is recent, it took effect formally just summer of this year, so. This will be one of the first environmental reviews that this Commission will be seeing with this change, so we're. We're trying to do our best to kind of provide the best clear information that we can as we go through this process, but for the purpose of tonight. There is a discussion of vehicle miles traveled, which is the metric that we are now required to use for evaluating transportation impacts. From the environmental perspective under SEQA that is in the initial study. And for that component, the finding is that this impact would be less than significant. There wouldn't be a significant increase in vehicle miles traveled as a result of this project. That was. That analysis is informed. Excuse me, by a separate report that was prepared by the same traffic consultant who is assisting the city with the overall traffic analysis for.
All right. Thank you for that summary. I really appreciate it. I knew about vehicle mile travels and the change that was coming up. And it'll be interesting to see how it moves forward as time goes on.
Yes, it will. We appreciate your questions on it. We'll we'll do our best to clarify throughout this process.
Thank you.
Is there any other discussion? From any of you?
I'll just I'll just add to that that. I had kind of the same questions for Kyle earlier today. And he's explaining to me how the vehicle miles traveled. Because we have such a. Such an imbalance between what's what's I'm probably going to use the wrong language here, Kyle, but you can correct me. That the housing employee employer balance is is so lopsided in slow that the vehicle miles traveled. Is going to be is is going to be a relatively moot point going forward for a considerable period of time, it seems.
Yeah, I can jump in real quick. I think the the term that is being used right now is called a jobs housing imbalance, so that's the term that we're using in our office.
Thank you. I knew I got that wrong.
And conceptually, the idea is if you have a jobs rich place like San Luis. Where everybody is commuting from all over the county to work there, if you could build more housing in San Luis, commute times and distances would go down in theory. That's the concept.
So. With no further discussion, we need a motion. To move this forward.
This is Tyler here. Actually, on this particular item, there is no motion needed from the Commission. This is, you know, comments can be provided individually. We've heard some questions. And there's been some responses, but there is no. And there's been some responses, but there is no formal motion from the commission, so it's really about hearing from the public, which we didn't get a lot of public comment on this one, and then also if there's any additional comments from the commission, it can be individual.
And to that, I would just remind the public again, we have until December 28. If you think of something between now and then, write it, email it. We have that address, and I think, I'm not sure that this PowerPoint will be on the city's website with the address where you can send any comments you might have to Kyle. And then we'll make sure the consultant gets that, Chris will be able to get that from there.
Okay, then that completes item three, then we'll move to item four, the last public hearing on the active transportation plan, and this will require a motion. So let's jump in then with a staff report. And see where we are here, I'm flipping through, so how is this going to be managed, Adam going to be, I see Adam now, so Adam will be presenting the staff report, I take it?
Actually Luke will start it off, but let me just get my screen going, just one second here. Good evening, by the way.
Good evening.
Yeah, I'll kick this off, Luke Schwartz, Transportation Manager at the city. The item we have before you tonight is really the culmination of the, about two, a little over two years of planning process. With a lot of heavy lifting from our active transportation committees, from staff and from the community in guiding development of this plan, it's, it's the city's first combined pedestrian and bicycle plan. It builds off our existing bicycle plan and incorporates pedestrian element for the first time in the city's history, so we're really excited about it. I'll let Adam take over the bulk of the presentation, but we're here for any questions or comments following the staff presentation.
Great, thank you Luke. Yes, first of all, I just want to say how excited we are to bring this to you, just like Luke said, it's almost three years in the making, working with the community, the Active Transportation Committee, the ATC, which has done an enormous amount of work on it, you know, we're really excited to bring this forward to you tonight and get some input. Okay. Just first of all, starting with the commission purview, that's to consider the Active Transportation Committee's recommendation regarding the plan that they made last week, reviewing the project for general planning consistency, and providing a recommendation to the city council. And the recommendation is to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the plan and adopt a negative declaration of environmental impact for the project. So why are we creating an active transportation plan? First of all, this is our, our first comprehensive plan on both bicycling and walking, just like Luke said, it's a policy in our circulation element. And it also increases our readiness for state grants, which have really added the focus on disadvantaged communities, they've been, they've become quite competitive, and so this just gets us a little bit more ready to enter that competition. Just looking at the plan at a glance, it's founded on some core principles. And they, they consist of sustainability, climate action, equity, community resilience, and economic vitality. And the vision really is that our city will be an active transportation-friendly city, where people of all ages, incomes, backgrounds, and ability levels have access to sustainable transportation options that are healthy, comfortable, convenient, and affordable. And it has four major goals. One is build it, that is to provide the infrastructure necessary to get the mode share, to reach our mode share goals. Two is safety, that active transportation can be and should be safe. Accessibility, this is the idea that active transportation should be convenient, it should be connected, and it should get you to where you want to go. Four is equity, and that's that bicycling and walking should be for everybody. Okay, just a little bit about the structure of the plan. Chapter two, the vision and goals are really, are important to this, it kind of permeates throughout the whole plan. Chapters three and four talk about bicycling and walking today, what the barriers are, and what the public tells us as what they see as possible solutions. Chapter five looks at recommended bicycle and pedestrian projects, really taking that community input and trying to translate that into recommended projects. Chapter six looks at programs to help along those, those projects. And, and seven is implementation, it talks about making difficult decisions about you know, very worthy projects and making prioritization of which, which projects will get us to our, our, our goals of the plan. And then we have appendices, some detailed project information if you want to dive into that, about the limits of each project, the costs, and some of the constraints that are involved with each one. And we have an appendix at the end of design guidelines, which is really an update of what we had in the bike plan, and adding on to that is what he added, as well as adding pedestrian design as well. Okay, changes from the 2013 Bicycle Transportation Plan. First of all, like I said pedestrians, which is really exciting, we have a long history of doing bicycle planning, and this is our, our first stab at having a formal plan for that, of course, we've done pedestrian planning in the past, but we never had like a formal central plan for that, and so this is the first one that provides that. We have some new design tools, since the, the, the other plan, the old plan, I guess, you know, soon we'll be calling it. One is protected bike lanes. This is a new design tool that has just been allowed by Caltrans, and so a lot of cities across the state are looking at incorporating this into their plans. Protected intersections are another one, I'll, I'll get into what the, what that is. And new crossing devices such as flashing beacons and hot signals like the new one we have on Foothill Boulevard. Another, another focus of the plan is really a focus on creating those intuitive routes with more direct connections to the key destinations and providing that, that transportation focus to our planning efforts. Okay, climate action goals. So as you, you all probably know, the city has a goal of being carbon neutral by 2035. And we know that transportation is the largest producer of greenhouse gas emissions. And the Climate Action Plan has a pillar number four that, that really says that in order to achieve our 2035 goals, we actually have to achieve our, our general plan mode split goals by 2030, so about five years earlier, just because of the, the large role that transportation plays, and so if you look at how that all breaks down, a large part of that is, is achieving our mode split goals. Electric vehicles will help, but that's not, that's not all of what will be necessary to reach that goal, it's also not something where we want in the city where everything is just electric vehicles and we have no mode shift. Okay? And with that, so what are our mode shift goals? The general plan has a goal of reaching 20% mode share for bicycles and 18% for walking carpools and other forms of transportation, currently we're about 8% for bicycling and 7% for walking carpools and other forms. And what this plan does is really is, it's an important blueprint towards achieving our active transit, our climate action goals. We don't have much time to reach 2030, we have about nine years, so this plan is really trying to come up with it really makes some proposals of difficult decisions about how we can really reach those goals within those nine years. Barriers to walking, we did some surveys throughout this, this planning process, and basically the barriers to walking are, we found that most people are afraid of drivers, they're, they're afraid of being close to traffic, they don't feel safe walking at night, and they have a lot of, of concerns about infrastructure issues. Okay, so looking at what those barriers are, that really helps and guides us and look at the types of tools that we may use to reduce those conflicts and the concerns about stress people have about this infrastructure barriers, and so for solutions, we've been looking at things like pedestrian signals, bullbouts to reduce the, the crossing distance, refuge islands, of course sidewalks are a very important part of it, high vis crosswalks, curb ramps, and flashing beacons. Barriers to bicycling, very similar. A lot of people don't like bicycling in traffic. There are concerns about gaps in the bikeway network, speeding, and not enough connections between bikeway, bikeway facilities. Excuse me. Types of bicyclists in San Luis Obispo, there's sort of a national best practice of looking at the different types of bicyclists. It was sort of assumed in the past that, that there weren't really any differences, I mean now we kind of find out that there are differences among people about how they, they'd like to ride, this is based off of a Portland study that's really used nationwide now, and uses these four different types. The first one is what's sort of called the strong and fearless, this is like the traditional cyclist, a lot of people have a, 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 a concept of, and that's a person who's really willing to ride on any roadway. And that they really don't need any kind of designated bike facilities. The other is enthusiastic and confident, these are people who, you know, they do ride, but they really prefer to be in their own space, sort of like in the designated bike lane or off-street facility. The other one is an interested but concerned rider, these are people who are not riding at all, or not very often, but they would like to ride more, but they want to do it in on facilities that provide them the space and the low stress that, that gives, that makes you feel more comfortable. And then there's 21%, who don't really want to do that, and that's okay, we don't have to reach everyone. But I think the main point that we, that we found out of this is that there's about 60% of city residents who would bike more often if there were, if we actually created some of these low-stress routes and crossings. Okay? So what are the bike facilities we'll be looking at, and look at the barriers that we heard about to bicycling? We'd be looking at, of course, some, you know, some of the tools we've already been using and already been working towards building, and that's shared use paths. Of course, the traditional bike lanes, but there are other things as well too. Like I mentioned, this, this plan introduces protected bike lanes and also expands our neighborhood greenway network. Okay, I want to expand a little bit more on protected bike lanes. Like I said, there are new facility that Caltrans is just allowed in California, there's, there's different ways to build them, there's a concept out there that protected bike lanes are sort of just soft hit posts put into the bike lane and, and call it done, and it's, it's there actually are different ways of doing this that can provide more, more comfort, more space, and provide sort of that, that level of, of low stress that can get families out and more people riding, and so you see some photos here, for instance, like the top right, that provide more separation. Even adding in a parking lane to give more separation and provide more comfort. Our plan, as proposed, recommends a, an elevated protected bike lane, really on the curb level, which makes it easier to maintain, gives more separation from traffic, and so you see, you see some examples down there on, on the, on the bottom, on the bottom photos as well too. Okay, protected intersections. With these, we're starting to see, you know, these, these started in the Netherlands, we're starting to see more of them in the United States. There's, there's one in Davis, there's some in, in Portland, in Utah, in Colorado, we're starting to see interest in doing them here. And I think, you know, they're coming to more cities like ours. What they do is they, for, for bicycling, they really provide a way to get through an intersection without having to make those, those left-hand turns and sharing traffic, especially in large intersections and on arterial streets, they also benefit pedestrians as well too, by, by reducing the crossing distance. So in having all those tools, staff and the ATC worked closely together on a number of meetings to develop a network of routes of, of, for walking and bicycling, and especially crossing improvements that, that serve both walking and bicycling, to help create that, you know, that comfort level to get more people out riding. It, it started with the, as a base, as a baseline, it started on the, with the, the bike, the, the bike plan, all the projects in the bike plan, and then just building on that. So in the end, we have over 240 projects in the plan of, of routes and crossing improvements. An enormous amount of work went into this, it went almost the whole summer of last year. Okay, just to go over briefly what the proposed projects were, the plan proposes about tripling our shared use paths. It, it talks about neighborhood greenways, we've already actually started adding on to that, just this summer, we added two more neighborhood greenways, and really talking about this protected bike lanes. And then I mentioned the crossing improvements, the plan recommends about 63 crossing improvements to really help out with both bicycling barriers, but also, like I said, the pedestrian barriers, we heard from many pedestrians that there are barriers between neighborhoods, so you know, going between a neighborhood to across large streets to get to services like parks, so if you live across South Street and want to get to Meadow Park, we heard that crossing improvements were really the types of improves that people wanted to get, and then connect their community. Same with Foothill Boulevard, if you live in the Anaheim area, crossing improvements helped get to the schools north of there, like Bishop Peak and Batik Elementary School, and many other parts of the city. So with this, there are many projects, like I mentioned, and since this is a, a planning level, you know, this is a high-level plan, we didn't come up with just one cost estimate, we came up with a low and a high, and that's between 50 million and 406 million, and that's it's not a low amount, of course, which you can tell, and so what that really does is it means that we need to make really difficult choices between really worthy projects about which ones will help us meet, meet those mode share goals by 2030. And this is a project prioritization that we've worked on with the ATC. It's broken down into three tiers, tier one are the highest priority projects with the greatest potential to increase bicycling and walking, and what's important here is that these are the projects that the city will actively pursue for funding first. Tier two are the moderate priority projects that play an important role in the network, but have a little bit less potential than tier one projects. These are projects that the city will pursue as opportunities arise, but not at the expense of the language your one network. And then tier three, which is basically all the rest of the projects, and these are lower priority projects that they help complete the network, but are not likely to generate measurable increases in bicycling and walking trips. And most of these will be funded through grants or where required as a condition of development. This is a tier one network, this was developed based off of the travel demand model, and it really provides those gaps in the network and completes trips across town. So if you're in the Laguna Lake area and need to get to the other side of town, there is a, a route for you. If you're in, for instance, near Tank Farm Road in the Arbers, and you like it to downtown, or vice versa, there's a route network to get there. And if you're in the, in the north part of, of the city, you can get to downtown, and then very crucial is the crosstown east and west, we, we hear a lot of people say that that is a major barrier for them for bicycling and walking, and so that is included in the network as well. And this can accommodate about 70 to 80% of all trips. The tier two and three projects, these are based off of a data-driven process that was, worked on with the ATC. And I'll just go over the prioritization factors, one was safety and collisions, look at those areas that have high collision concentrations. Looking at disadvantaged communities and how the state defines it, and using as a factor, as well as the, a slow cog also has a factor for a regional definition, which is in the plan, and it's, it's explained in more detail. The results of our outreach. Looking at the pavement project schedule, which ones, which areas are coming up for repaving, so that we can combine bicycle and pedestrian projects together and get a cost savings. And looking at proximity at certain destinations, and these destinations include the following. And, and these are all destinations that people want to get to, these include schools, parks and open space, Cal Poly is of course a big destination, the downtown, retail and employment centers, connections to transit. connections to transit and senior services. Okay, and then over above those, those three tiers that I talked about, there's another level, another layer of project prioritization that the, that the plan has. And that's similar to the tier two bike way network. And that it looks at proximity, looks at proximity to different different areas such as senior living areas, schools and senior services. And basically what is trying to be achieved here is that we have a lot of pedestrian needs. If we look at all the needs for curb ramps in the city sidewalk gaps, it would literally be in the thousands. So, so rather than listing them all and prioritizing them. The ATC came up with a list of zones, really that really have high pedestrian concentration that can be looked at for adding these, these specific pedestrian improvements. And there are areas like the downtown. The, the Laguna Lake area, areas near Foothill Boulevard and, and, and so on. Okay, and then in addition to all the projects. The plan also proposes new pedestrian programs. And I just want to go over some of these goals as well too. One is to continue our ongoing safety and education campaigns. Parklets with COVID nineteen, we've been able to roll out parklets all over downtown and, and, and throughout the city. And what the plan does is it proposes providing a, a formal parklet program on, on a more permanent basis and provides design guidelines on that. Safers to school. Right now, we have a safers to school plan for two schools in this, in the city, and that's Pacheco Elementary School and Bishop Peak. And the plan proposes having a focused safest to school plan for every school in the city. And then supporting things like open streets such as a cyclovia, you've seen in Los Angeles, in the Bay Area. We're starting to see them in Santa Barbara and Santa Cruz. And we think it, it adds something to the pedestrian experience. And so it's included in the plan as a recommendation to explore. And then other things like neighborhood traffic calming, ways of trying to bring the speeds down and the volumes down in neighborhoods. Adding to the pedestrian experience, making walking enjoyable, not just something that's for a transportation purpose, but something that is fun and gets you to places you want to be. Adding things like public art, place making opportunities, landscaping, all to enhance and beautify the pedestrian experience. Implementation, the plan will be built over a number of years. It, it, it doesn't supersede the budget process, but it really will depend on it and will, will depend on multiple financial plans between now and twenty thirty. And, and with that also, you know, other factors will also be very important as well too to reduce the cost. And one is leveraging funds. You know, I talked about the roadway resurfacing projects with our annual summer pavement, paving schedule. Quick build is a new strategy in testing out projects with semi-permanent materials, testing them out, see if they work and then following up with more more long-term or, or more permanent solutions later on. And then projects built as a condition of development. The city of San Luis Obispo has been successful in using the bike plan to get many trails done and other infrastructure improvements. And so this plan will rely heavily on those transportation impact fees to get a fair share contribution towards, towards this plan. Performance measures, how are we going to measure performance? We came up with a number of factors and we discussed them at length with the ATC. Let's go over a few of them. Of course, mode share is very important. So right now, like I said, we're about eight percent for bicycling. Seven percent for walking. We want to reach those, those motor goals of twenty percent. We also wanted to add a pedestrian specific goal. The circulation element may have noticed before kind of lumps in carpooling and, and walking together. We want to really call that out. And so we're proposing twelve percent as the goal for walking alone. Other factors, looking at decreasing the amount of driving alone to fifty percent or less, which is mentioned in the climate action plan, also talks about meeting our goals of reaching our funding allocations across the various transportation modes according to our most split objectives. So making sure that if we're going to reach twelve percent motor by bicycling, that we're spending twenty percent of our transportation budget on bicycling and then likewise for, for walking. And then also trying to achieve our vision zero goals. Okay, just real quickly over our, our public outreach that we can, that we conducted. We came up with a branding strategy called Roll and Stroll. That was really popular and it was fun to go out and get input from the public. We met face to face with people in neighborhoods. The idea here was not to expect people to come to us sort of, you know, to those traditional workshops, but to come to them and meet them where they live. So at weekends, we went out to a lot of locations throughout the city to meet with people and and ask them what they thought about active transportation. We did hold a sort of traditional open house at this little library. Got a lot of input on what people thought the barriers were to bicycling and walking and engagement. We also did online activities. We had a statistically valid survey sent out where we asked people what the, the barriers were for, for them and what they thought as the proposed solutions. And then we had a interactive web tool where people can click on a map and they could tell us of the places, the, the routes that they thought should be improved. We had over nineteen meetings with the Active Transportation Committee. And I just want to thank them for all their engagement. They put a lot of hard work into it. We also had in-person meetings and input with a lot of external stakeholders as well for, from Cal Poly downtown association and a lot of nonprofits. Okay, general plan consistency. In addition to the goals, of course, on motor targets, the ATP implements over sixty five goals and policies and programs from the following general, general plan elements. They include the circulation element, circle conservation, open space element and the land use element. And these sixty five goals all range from making the shift from replacing more sick clock, you could see car trips with active transportation trips, making walking accessible and enjoyable. Making land use decisions that connect neighborhoods and making walking and bicycling easier to do and connect land uses. Environmental review, an initial study negative declaration of environmental impact was was, was produced. The plan is a, the plan is a program or like a policy level document. It does not provide a project specific details for sequel analysis. Any projects in the plan would have to undergo a project level sequel analysis. And so what we're saying is that this does not approve any projects to move forward. Any projects that we do initiate will have to have their own analysis done. But the initial study does not identify any potential significant impacts that would occur as a result of the plan adoption. At this point, I thought I would hand over to Luke who could respond to some questions we've received from the public.
Yeah, thanks, Adam. Yeah, I want to hit on a couple of points that seem to be some common themes in the public comment and questions we've received so far. The first one really focuses on our, our tier one, our highest priority bicycle pedestrian network. Some of the questions we've received have been, why does the plan appear to prioritize on-street protected bike lanes with cycle tracks over off-street shared use paths, a lower stress parallel neighborhood routes and recreational facilities? If you go to the next slide, please, Adam. I think it's really important to, to get in a little more detail about how the, the process and prioritization procedure worked for identifying this kind of highest priority network. The thought process was first start off with all the potential projects that pull over from the existing bike plan and new projects that were identified by the ATC and the community and guiding this. Start with that whole network. And then hone in on the combination of routes and crossing improvements, gap closures that we think provides a cohesive network of crosstown connections that serve most destinations that people want to go to. But with the lens of, of can we construct these in a reasonable timeframe? So a big focus is this is trying to bring this plan into alignment with our climate action plan, which calls for the city to try to achieve our mode share goals within really the next ten years, which is a huge endeavor. And so we wanted to focus on projects that not only have great value and have that level of comfort and low stress environment that most even less experienced cyclists and pedestrians will feel comfortable using, but that there are projects that we could reasonably move forward with and, and construct in a, in a shorter timeframe. The graphic I have here is basically our tier one network with the color coding based on facility type. So our whole network is comprised of several off-street kind of shared use paths. Those are in red. That includes extending gap closures along the railroad safety trail through the orchid area. Includes extending the link of the northern portion of the railroad safety trail, which actually just started in construction this last month. Since this plan was in progress, that's already, we've made progress on that. So that's been, that will connect from south of Taft Street down to Pepper Street and across the Union Pacific tracks there. But we also have other shared use paths identified along Tank Farm Road along the planned Prado Road extension and as well as along the Dona Road, which are in construction now currently and, and sections of Delideo which are being built for Samu's Ranch. If we had the right of way and the feasibility to construct completely dedicated pedestrian and bicycle facilities off the street throughout the city to, to make these connections, that would be our recommendation. Those are, are great from a, a, a level of stress perspective. When you can minimize conflicts and crossings with, with vehicle traffic. But the reality is it's, there's a lot of locations and routes where there isn't really an option for a parallel shared use path. And in addition, there's other connections that are just really, really challenging to implement. This last extension of the railroad safety trail, trail south to Cal Poly, we've been in planning for over eight years. And we're just now shovels are just hitting the ground now after that process. So the red line work is our shared use paths that are part of our tier one network. Green is a, a few low stress neighborhood green. We had options to root through, through low traffic neighborhood streets. And then the rest, the blue line work are physically protected bike waves. So those are facilities are designated for, for bicyclists, but have that physical separation, a lot of that comfort that you get from a shared use path, but they're on the street. They connect the destinations that people want to go to. And they, they're mostly within the right of way that the city already has jurisdiction over and can easily work within. Next slide, please, Adam. And I, I think where this really, this question kind of hones in on is, is folks are saying, why aren't we just really focusing on completing the railroad safety trail? And the Bob Jones Trail within the city limits. And I think, you know, staff, I think the ATC agrees, those are really valuable and important connections. I would love to be able to hop on the bike with my kids and ride all the way to Abilah Beach. I think that's would be a, an awesome piece of infrastructure for the city and for the region at some point in time. At the time being, there's gaps on both the railroad safety trail and the Bob Jones Trail that we would love to move forward with, but there's challenges that make it very difficult. On the railroad safety trail, you'll see the darker line work includes segments that are in this active transportation plan, but they're not at the top priority. These are gaps that will likely remain in the near future on those trail connections. The lighter pink line work you see are segments of those trails that are either already exist or are, are, are in our tier one network and are priorities that we want to advance. On the railroad safety trail, that, that last kind of connection between the Amtrak station and Pepper Street is along the railroad. Union Pacific's plan already told us they're not willing to cooperate on the right of way needs that we would have to acquire to build that. In addition, there's lots of challenging grade separated crossings, other private right of way needs. We'd be looking at tanning right away from several private property owners and just the challenges associated, associated with that and the timeframe that it would take to build that is, is not something that we could advance quickly. Similarly with the Bob Jones Trail, there's kind of two segments that are in the plan that aren't prioritized at the highest level that I want to talk about. One is that stretch north of Prado Road where the trail ends all the way up into downtown. It aligns along the creek. There's riparian concerns. It's all in a floodplain. But in addition, there's you know, twelve or thirteen property owners that we need to acquire right away from to be able to construct that. A couple of grade separated crosses, including going under or over Madonna Road near the interchange there. Ultimately, it's just really challenging. While we still plan to continue trying to acquire right of way bits and pieces. It's not a project that we think we can move forward with and build in the next ten years. A little deeper discussion on that red little kind of half U shape of the Bob Jones Trail you see at the south side. That's the connection between Octagon Barn and LOVR. That stretch is a little different. That they don't have the same level of, of challenges. But at the same time, the ATC thought about this a lot and it said ultimately, we just don't know that this project has the same utility and potential to generate new ridership compared to some of the other routes and projects you see in the tier one network. So this one's in the plan. It's tier two, which is, it's valuable. We, we'd move forward with it, but not at the detriment of advancing or delaying the other tier one projects. You know, some concerns have been raised that having this project not at the highest party in the city's plan might impact the ability of the county and others to pursue grant opportunities for the stretch of the Bob Jones Trail south of here. You know, some ideas that staff has thrown around to help kind of address some of those concerns is the feasibility of identifying this as, as a tier two project, but with the caveat or note in the plan that if the county secures funding, whether it's grants or other sources to move forward with the rest of the Bob Jones Trail, we'd be happy to reconsider prioritizing that higher if completing that little gap has more utility to serve more riders. So that's something we're, we're open to entertain. If, if that's something the planning commission recommends and if the council ultimately would like to see. But that's kind of the, the background on why those sections of trails aren't part of our highest priority network. Next slide, please, Adam. I walked through a couple of other questions that have come up frequently. They, I figured they might be questions that the planning commission is interested in asking too is why doesn't the plan have a more specific focus on the downtown core? I think the intent of the plan is to take the really great and well-thought-out recommendations on transportation that were in the downtown concept plan and kind of wrap that under the umbrella of the ATP. Knowing that it's a citywide plan, we probably won't go into that same level of detail. Right now, our, our, our project priorities, our cost estimates include most of those really high priority projects like mid-block crossings, crossing improvements at like Santa Rosa and Aguirre and Santa Rosa and Monterey. I think we agree that the plan could have more details and potentially some more graphics and content explaining what those specific projects are and tying that in and pulling those references out of the downtown concept plan. That, that's something we plan to do as we update this or refine this towards a final plan. So we, we completely agree that the downtown needs to have some more love in this plan and, and plan to do that. The question, you're considering the current economic environment challenges and other problems the city's facing. Why would the city prioritize spending lots of money on bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure right now? And I want to be clear, the plan doesn't commit funding at, at this time at, at any level. It's really a blueprint and a rough kind of prioritization of how we would build out this network. Like with any other project, the city council, the community would make financial decisions about what projects we fund and when as part of each two-year budget cycle. Also, some questions about will individual neighborhoods have more opportunities to provide input on specific projects? Well, as Adam mentioned, we did really robust public outreach program. We tried to spread the word on this plan as many places as we can. Get the word out and get input from everyone involved. That said, you know, sometimes people won't have a full understanding of what's in the plan until a project comes forward. The plan does not displace the need for more specific project planning, neighborhood outreach. And that's something we'd absolutely do as each individual project was it would be advanced as part of that early planning and design stage. As the plan looked at the effects of, of, of the ATP recommendations on traffic circulation, yes, at a high level. We don't have any projects in the plan that we feel would decrease vehicular traffic circulation below the performance levels that we've established as a city. With that said, any specific project would go through that level of analysis to see if there are any negative impacts on traffic circulation. abilities for our buses and emergency services to operate as they do now. And finally, how does the plan accommodate needs of seniors, young families, folks with disabilities that maybe will, will really have to rely on a car for many of their trips moving forward. I think at, at a high level, by making transportation via bicycle, walking, or really transit, which is a big point of this plan to is connecting to transit. It, it allows more people that, that are interested to use those modes, which frees up traffic capacity and parking for folks that don't have an option or are not interested. That's a big piece of it. But as well, building in a whole pedestrian component to this plan, a big focus in that is looking at providing facilities that serve the uses and needs of people of all different ability, ability levels. Including a focus on ADA upgrades, completing sidewalk gaps. And really designing infrastructure that works for pedestrians that have mobility challenges, but also cyclists. There's a diverse community of cyclists. Including folks that use your common bicycles, trikes and other types of devices that maybe fit their own. and other types of devices that maybe fit their own abilities and physical needs differently. And the plan has really put a lot of thought in the design guidelines, which is in the appendix, about how we should be designing facilities that work for different types of bikes and people. I'll pass this back to you, Adam, to wrap this up.
Okay. Yeah, just re, re, re briefly at the end here, just talked about concurrence. Last week, the ATC recommended adopting the active transportation plan. And that staff consider a few comments that they had for inclusion. We, we sent that to you as a general correspondence. I won't go over all of them, but I'll go over just some common themes. One was to improve the clarity of the maps and the ability to zoom in. And we, we totally agree with this. Actually, we're working with a consultant now to improve the, the quality of the maps. So you can really zoom in on them and see where each project is on each individual street. Another one is providing more explanation of plan concepts, including the project tiers and how that would all work. They asked for refinements to how causes of collisions are described, as well as adding language on Vision Zero to better explain that. We also saw comments on ways to improve the organization and just the general flow of the plan. There's also requests to add and change certain photos to illustrate key concepts. And we, we have actually already started in that process and there's, we'll be updating that as we go as well, too. Last night, we had a council study session, which, which we think was really helpful. Got a lot of good feedback from the general council. They were generally supportive of the plan so far. They didn't take any action, but they did provide some general comments to, to help out as we move forward towards a final plan. And that is that they'd like to see more info on wayfinding signs. They had some questions on how to integrate bike racks with public art, as well as opportunities to integrate sort of any of the proposed projects with any efforts for beautification. They talked a lot about some of the efforts downtown to add beautifications, beautification, such as the painted bull bouts that we've been seeing the last couple of weeks. They liked that. They wanted to see more of that. They wanted to see more description on how bicycling and walking projects can both benefit each other. He asked for a policy or discussion on neighborhood compatibility. Just as Luke alluded to, just looking at, you know, when these projects come up, you know, really focusing on the public outreach to get more input and making sure that these projects really are compatible with the neighborhoods that, that they will go through and around. And then strong support for opportunities to provide lighting. That's one of the recommendations in this plan. We heard a lot from folks around Cal Poly that they like to have more lighting at night. And then just more explanation of how sidewalks, you know, how they are built in neighborhoods and how that all works. Okay. And the public draft is out now until the end of the year. People can find it at slowbikewalk.org and they can email comments to me at the, at the address seen here, or they can leave a, a comment on the project website. Okay, just go over briefly the, the schedule where we're at right now. Review is out until the end of the year. We had the ATC recommendation last week. Council set study session last night. Tonight is before you. And the idea is to go to our city council for adoption on February 2nd. And with that, I'll end it with the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Very, very helpful presentation. So are there questions of Adam and Luke or Luke from commissioners? You could just raise your hand or nod or something because I can see you all. Commissioner Hopkins first.
Yeah, I have a couple. Thank you, Chair Dorgren or Vice Chair Dorgensen. So I think my first question is in relation to one of the public comment letters sent by Mr. Viam. And it mentioned, had a few recommendations for integration of some, not only just e-bike, but general e, I guess, non-car transportation, skateboard, scooters, that kind of thing. And I was just wondering if that was considered as a part of this plan? Is there any challenges related to safety integrating the electrical vehicle component into those dedicated bike or pedestrian improvements?
Yeah, I could, I can answer this one. So yeah, the plan does talk about electric bikes. Talks, it talks about electric bike charging stations, looking, exploring options for that. You know, we do think there is value in maybe adding some discussion or maybe even a policy, a policy action on making sure that our paths or our bikeway products that we built are compatible with e-bikes. We know that they are, you know, e-bikes usually go at a little bit of higher speed. So yeah, we, we definitely see a value in that. We also even heard from council last night about, you know, the, the real mode shift they can provide for a lot of people in getting involved with bikes for the first time. They say, wow, this is really great. I want to do this more. It helps me get over those hills that are really a factor to us. And even talking about provide options for people to get e-bikes as well, too. You know, e-bikes are expensive and they're, they're also an equity concern. But I think that's, it's worth looking into to see what options we can provide to get more people on e-bikes.
Great. Thank you for that. And then a couple more. So also just, I'm glad you brought up equity. In regards to ways to improve access for folks, I was just wondering what kind of consideration was being put into, especially the tier one, you know, the highest level priority projects and how. You know, you talked about the prioritization, didn't really see equity there necessarily. So I wanted to just get some thoughts or hear your thoughts on the process of how equity will be integrated in the tier, tier one projects.
Yeah. So, you know, basically the plan looks at a number of things with equity. One is if we could make bicycling and walking more accessible for people. We know that, that reduced transportation costs, which makes it easier for people to live here. That's one of the ways we've, we've looked at equity. It also was a scoring value we had in the tier two and three. You know, levels as well, too, looking at how SLOCOG and the state defines those and giving points to those to, to kind of raise the, the level for that. Also, the tier one network, you know, it's designed to provide these crosstown routes. And so it kind of, you know, gets you to every corner of the city. We think that helps out with the equity as well. So another thing that the, the plan tries to do is, you know, lay out a public engagement sort of platform to, 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 to engage in, you know, so that we can reach people where they're at. Engagement opportunities that look at, you know, those who don't want to or can't go to traditional city council meetings, try and engage people where they're at to get more involvement to help out with the equity.
I'll, I'll add to that, Adam, too, is when it comes to the project levels, so say we have a tier one network. Well, what pieces are we starting with? I think part of the process in working with the ATC to identify our CIP, our budget requests every two-year cycle is looking at those links. And what's helpful is having those maps in this plan that identify areas where we have higher concentrations of people with low income or otherwise disadvantaged status. Is that as we're laying out this network and, and starting this path that we're not investing resources in areas that disproportionately benefit people with higher incomes or with greater, with, with, with less disadvantage, I guess, than communities that might have greater needs. And so that, that's a big piece of the puzzle when it comes to actually implementing the network is saying, this is how we're going to try to make our investments. Not only don't pre, give preference to other non-disadvantaged communities, but ideally bridge those gaps to those disadvantaged communities first.
Great. And then just one, one more sort of related to this is after implementation, you know, once we're able to get these improvements built in, you list some of the measurements, the quantifiable measurements we're going to be using to, to check ourselves on, on the implementation of the plan and wanted to, didn't really see an equity metric there either. And so just wanted to see, you know, if you guys put thought into how to view equitable utilization of these new improvements.
Yeah, that's a good point. And actually, the ATC raised that as well. So we think that that's a great idea. We want to add actually another performance measure on equity. One of the things we thought about is just looking at the, the, the breakdown of, you know, like, like we know who, who drives. We kind of know what the breakdown is for that. And we thought, well, maybe the performance measure could be that the number of people, you know, the types of people bicycling and walking should be at the same sort of demographic breakdown as for those who drive as well, too, or, or some other ways of looking at it as well, too, just look at the equity issue.
Yeah, I'll add to that. It's basically a city that, that designs for walking and bicycling, bicycling really well. The distribution of people walking and bicycling is pretty close to the distribution of all people commuting or, or traveling in general. And if you look at our data, it's very strongly swayed to men of a certain age, a certain income level. And so we, we kind of struggled with this in developing the plan in that we didn't want to have a specific metric that was really based on like immutable characteristics of people. But at the same time, it's, it's a useful measure of just seeing, is your community, is your system designed for everybody? And if it is, you'll start to see those demographics kind of be pretty much in line depending on, regardless of which mode of travel. So the ATC actually recommended that we add a metric that kind of achieves that objective in the final plan. So that, that's what we're planning on.
And if I could just add to that, too, we've, we've also shared this plan with the DEI Task Force, Diversity Equity Inclusion. And we're hoping maybe we could get some helpful comments on that as well, too, to help us out.
Thank you, Commissioner Hopkins. Commissioner Quincy.
Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself. So
Sorry.
A big concern I've had is the lack of streetlights. And I noticed that it was addressed in the draft. Living and working in downtown, I've always been very perplexed at why all the surrounding neighborhoods, virtually the streetlights are nonexistent. And I would think that we would want to encourage walking to downtown at, at nighttime. So I was surprised to see there was even a, it was called a new streetlight installation program. Can you guys shed, no pun intended, can you shed some light on that? I, I, yeah, I, I just hadn't heard about it and I was, I was interested in the progress of that. And if you could just tell me a little bit about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So our current engineering standards, any kind of new neighborhood, new construction, we call for streetlights every about 200 feet or so and at every intersection. The, it's alternates with more frequency or at least between each side of the street on wider streets and the lights are brighter on wider streets. With that said, a lot of our historic district order subdivisions were, were designed before those standards were in place. And even at the time, if you go back to some of the old, you know, staff reports for some of these older subdivisions, it was intentional in some cases. Some of these neighborhoods wanted a more, not one say royal feel, but a less urban feel. So some of them don't have sidewalks in every street. They don't have streetlights prominently throughout the neighborhood. So retrofitting streetlights is important and it's something that the council decided about a year and a half ago to start prioritizing. So we've been getting a budget every year of about $30,000 to $50,000 to put in these streetlights. But to give you some context, a new hardwired streetlight, we're putting in metal pole, new conduits with wirings, working with PG&E to get new service provided, which can take months. It can cost $30,000 each light with the city leaving these installations. So in the last two years, we've actually installed more than we thought we would be able to take on. We've done two kind of standard streetlights on a new metal pole. And we've installed about six, six or seven others that were bolting on lights on the existing utility poles. And so we've grabbed kind of low-hanging fruit with those because we can do a lot. We're also testing out some solar options. We have a product that we've tried at two locations that is kind of a standalone Cobra Head light that has a built-in solar panel and battery in it. It's for the, our lower wattage streets. So a narrow street, you know, that could work on. We don't have a, a product that's equivalent for wider streets, but it gives us an option. We, we can bolt them onto a pole. We don't have to mess with PG&E. We're not paying for electrical service. And we can do those types of projects much quicker and cheaper. So we, we tried it out. We really liked the product. I think we'll be doing more of those. But you're not alone in the survey results reaching out to the whole community. Street lighting was one of those top priorities for pedestrian circulation and it's certainly a priority we share. It, it's really just a, a funding and resources standpoint is, I think this plan clearly says this is a priority. We should be putting more time and, and resources into it. And I think we'll do that and we have more tools in our disposal that decrease our reliance on PG&E and the delays and costs that go along with that. So we echo that. I think it's, it's something we want to focus on as well.
Are there any tier one projects right now that involve streetlights? I, I tried to go through the, the list and I didn't see any. And that also kind of surprised me, given that it was identified as a, like either the first or second priority in one of those, one of those sections.
Yeah. And, and this is one of the, the comments that Adam had mentioned. I think there's some more attention that needs to be drawn in kind of leading the breadcrumbs to tell the story of, of the projects and that the tier, tiering network kind of identified corridors and crossing improvements for the most part. And then on the side of that is, is all of the other pedestrian features, curb ramps, sidewalk repairs, sidewalk gaps, streetlights. We'd be listing thousands and thou, we already have thousands of streetlights in the city. We'd be listing thousands more or so. In lieu of picking every single point, we said, well, here's, here's a criteria that we would use to prioritize which ones we do first. We'd like to do all of these. And that was that kind of heat map where we said, let's look at locations. One, I mean, the first lens would be, do we have a public health hazard, a tripping hazard, a safety problem or a collision history? That would be the first kind of category we looked at. And beyond that, it's focusing the downtown, the surrounding neighborhoods of the downtown, K through 12 schools, parks, senior living facilities. We kind of did an analysis in our GIS mapping tool to prioritize areas of the city that, that meet those criteria. And that's, that's what we do first. And streetlights are a big part of that. But we felt it cumbersome to try to list every location and have that. So I think the challenge is this, this map and that kind of structure is in the implementation chapter. Where I think we need more talk in the projects chapter, chapter five, that says, these are the priority pedestrian infrastructure that we plan to build. We want to fund them at a higher level and move forward with this. See chapter seven to talk about how we, what order we would do this in.
Okay, thank you. That was illuminating. All right, I'll, I'll stop with the dad.
Who's next? Who else, who else has comments or questions? Commissioner Shoresman.
Commissioner Quincy, you're so funny tonight. Yeah, I have probably three or four questions. First, I want to start out by just thanking Adam and Luke. And maybe they can thank the ATC on our behalf, too. They, I know they've done, you all have done an enormous amount of work. And considering that our last bike, bike plan was in 2013, I would say this is a long, long time coming. So thank you for all your work. In relation to some of the maps and sort of the overall circulation that, that you're planning and trying to put routes, you know, sort of equidistant throughout the city and trying to connect, you know, east to west and north to south and all parts in between. I noticed that on the, on the, on the map that shows all of the routes that, that are planned in the, in the active transportation plan, it looks like there are, there are buffered bike lanes planned basically all along Johnson Avenue, too, which is kind of the, I guess, northeast side of the city. And that didn't show up also on Luke's map that he was using at the end. Is, did I read that correctly? Is there proposed buffered bike lanes all along Johnson or at least somewhere in that general vicinity? And then headed out towards Orchid and, and the Arbers?
Yeah, they, they actually propose is physically protected bike lanes. The reason they weren't on the map I showed earlier is Johnson wasn't prioritized as that a tier one project at the top of the network. And that was namely because of the parallel path that the railroad safety provides. So the tier one network has, you know, continued to look at crossings, make sure people can get from those neighborhoods to the railroad safety trail. But the improvements identified on Johnson would be a lower priority project in the, in the current plan.
Okay. And then in regards to those couple of sections on the Bob Jones Bike Trail that you talked about and how I, I heard your presentation last night at the, at this city council meeting as well, the study session. And one of the things that you've mentioned both times is the fact that the, the section that goes along South Higera of the proposed Bob Jones Trail, it, it's problematic because and challenge, or I guess I should say challenging because it goes along the creek, it's in the floodplain, it crosses several property lines. It, it's problematic because and challenge, or I guess I should say challenging because it goes along the creek, it's in the floodplain, it crosses several property lines. I wondered if, and I heard you say last night that another problem about that path is that keeps it sort of in the prioritization level that you put it rather for, rather than further up is that from that proposed pathway, it's hard to get anywhere. It's, it's kind of a secluded pathway along the creek. It's not a, it's not a path that people could use to get to the shopping that's just off South Higera. So I wondered if there had ever been any discussion about rerouting that section to not be along the creek. You could, it seems like it could be moved to right there, parallel to South Higera and really pretty much start at the same spot and end at the same spot without having to deal with all the creek issues and the property line issues.
Yeah, that's a good question. Those actually discussed a lot with the ATC. One thing, you know, that was, was proposed to, to help that out was just a protected bike lane on South Higera to provide that physical separation. I think the discussion was, you know, it's, it's one thing to not have the Bob Jones trail, not be the tier one. But I think the ATC was really worried about, you know, there are a lot of folks who really still like the Bob Jones trail. They didn't want to just remove it right out, even though it is difficult to build. And, you know, just looking at, knowing that the county is trying to build their portion of it. I think they're worried about just that balance with a lot of folks who, you know, it is very popular among a lot of folks to have that trail. And so that's basically why it was left in as a parallel route.
Okay, and then the other part of the Bob Jones trail that I know there's been some public comment on and discussion about, too, the section between LOVR and the Octagon Barn. I believe I've heard one of you say at one of the other meetings that I listened to that it's possible that that section could be built as a condition of development as some of those properties that are along that sort of corridor there become developed in in future years. Is that, did I hear you correctly?
Yeah, absolutely. Just like, you know, when we talk about San Luis Ranch or the Orchid area, we have these large areas or even a smaller development that has a planned public facility, whether it be a path or a roadway connecting or along the frontage. That's something that is part of the orderly development of their site. If there's a, you know, significant development proposal and that'd be one of the first items that we'd say, hey, this needs to be part of this project. And in turn, that's that stretch of the Bob Jones trail is in our current traffic impact fee program. And the intent there is that there's a mechanism for reasonable reimbursement for the costs exceeding the fair share of a potential development that might come in on those lots if they're to construct this, which would be our intent with any kind of project that would come through along those areas.
Okay, two, I've just got two more questions. On the project list, as I was sort of going through it and I, I really appreciate the prioritization. I appreciate the amount of detail put in there about how much each project would increase ridership and mode share. I think that's an excellent way of determining what we should build first and second and third and so forth. I did notice that it looked like there are quite a few things on that project list that are maybe either already done or are now in progress. There was some, some striping that looks like it's been done already. I noticed the section of the railroad safety trail that, that Luke, you said, just broke down or broke ground is on there. So is, is that the case? Is that, am I, am I right about that, that some of those things have actually happened already?
Yes, that's true, you know, for instance, like we have actually two more bike boulevards that have been built, you know, this summer, like the Napomo Bike Boulevard, the Islay Street Bike Boulevard and probably several other ones. I think that's a function of, the plan has just taken a long time to get to this point. And so last year, when we worked on the, you know, the proposed projects. Yeah, I think we didn't anticipate it, you know, taking this long, but we can actually go through and, you know, before the final plan, make sure that all the list is up to date.
We might complete more in the next two months before we adopt the plan. It's, it's hard to keep up at the living document, so.
It is for sure. And then my last question is about some of the, the suggested items for inclusion that came from the active transportation plan that was submitted via public comment. I think there was an item number thirteen that talks about re- removing references to the U-style racks or I think they're called upside down U or U-style racks as an option for racks, for racks throughout the city. And I wondered, is that a change that we need to make to our community design guidelines? Or is that something that just can be made policy through a statement in the active transportation plan? That question has come up in, in many, many projects before. And so I wondered, how do we, how do we actually change that and make sure that that happens going forward?
Yes, I think maybe others, Tyler can, can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that has to be done in the zoning regulations and also in the engineering standards as far as using that as a standard. I think one thing also to think about is those U-racks are used frequently in areas where there's a small footprint. And so sometimes the only thing that could really fit is a U-style rack. I think that the desire actually is for, you know, using the peak, peak style racks just because they, you know, they don't require you to have a kickstand, you could lock your, your, your frame and your wheel together. But, you know, certainly some language to tighten up. Some of the use we've seen with some developments where they just put, you know, they only use U-racks for everything. And I think that's something that, you know, could use some tweaking because it should be an option in the areas where that's the only option that really fits. But it shouldn't be abused so that that's the only thing that people, that, you know, development uses.
Yeah, I would say that I think Adam has it right. I mean, the engineering standards is what we rely on to evaluate some of those features and improvements. And so that would be where we would want to see a change or an amendment. That's where it's discussed in detail in terms of the types of racks that would be appropriate. So that would be, you know, a future amendment to the engineering standards.
Okay. Also, finally, what, what, is there a timeframe proposed for how often? As I mentioned at the beginning of my questions, this is the first plan that's been done since 2013. It's 2020 and this is the first plan that's included pedestrians in it. What is the proposed schedule by which these plans would be revised and reassessed? And what's that cycle look like?
I think Luke and I are just trying to get to the final plan at this point for this one. We're really looking at that. But, you know, I think as, as needs come up, you know, we've, we've actually amended our, our 2013 bike plan a number of times. I would say maybe three times already. And that can, you know, that could happen with this plan as well, too. As we see big things that need to be changed, we've brought them to the ATC for recommendations and if gone to council and we have had amendments done to them, so.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt Luke. I would just add, the engineering standards are adopted by resolution, so that's something that we can, that could be taken forward really at any appropriate time for, for an amendment to those as well.
Yeah, on that note, I already have it flagged in my notes. We, I keep track of things that we want to incorporate in each engineering standards update. I have the same U-rack issue flagged. I, I don't like U-racks. The only place where we really like or kind of really are okay with them is like tight sidewalk, like in the downtown where we don't have with, for like a two or three space peak rack. But anyhow, am I trying to thought again?
Did I misunderstand, misunderstand you, Michelle? Did you mean?
Frequently they updated, yeah.
Do you mean the standards update or do you mean the plan update?
I meant the plan, but I appreciate, I appreciate Tyler's addition that it's good to know that as well. But I was, I was thinking more in terms of a revision or an update schedule for the plan.
Yeah.
Seems like seven or eight years is too long, but.
Well, I completely agree on that. Why this also, this update took, you know, between two and three years. So we'd like to not be, we like to be building things and not just planning. And I don't mean that with any disrespect to the planning commission. We like to implement. And so this was a big overhaul in that we were adding a whole other mode of travel into the plan. But also, we kind of had a weird timing with our last bike plan. It was formally adopted in 2014. 2015 Caltrans said, hey, we, we allow protected bike lanes now. Not only can you use them, but we think you should. And there's other innovations in the types of, of the ways that we approach bicycle facility design and pedestrian crossings. Things like rapid rectangular flashing beacons, those bright flashing beacons you've seen us put in a couple of locations. Those things are a toolbox that are really kind of the first go to best practices for bicycle pedestrian engineering now. They weren't in our toolbox at the time, so we missed a huge kind of gap. If we had updated the last plan like two years later, it would have looked a lot different. So my hope was that Adam said, this is a living document, we'll have minor amendments, here we go, here and there. And, you know, I, you know, every, you know, five to 10 years, we take a big comprehensive look to see what we're missing. But like I said, it definitely evolved over time, but the hope is that we spent a lot of time implementing this and not just planning every couple of years.
Thank you. Are you good, Commissioner Shoresman? Good. Commissioner Khan, did you want to get your two bits in on questions?
You know, I don't have any questions, but I'll just say I'm very, very impressed with the plan and the old saying, fail the plan, plan to fail. I think it's a good step forward. It's not a perfect document, but it's a living, breathing document like has been discussed tonight. So my only comment is, you know, very, very pleased us moving forward. And I think the community does a good job on this and I look forward to many more projects being built. I'm a build it guy, too, so I like it. That's all I have.
Thank you. Real quickly, I wanted to, I think my questions were pretty much asked already. I wanted to ask about the standing of Matt Horn's document that looks like Adam actually wrote up with about five pages of very thoughtful corrections. Are those going to be incorporated or does it need some action? Or what, what's, what's it standing, I guess, is the question.
I, I don't know what.
There's an agenda correspondence and the challenge was with the date that the planning commission staff report was published, which was last Wednesday. We had a kind of an initial hearing with the ATC that Tuesday. And they gave us a lot of those comments and then they decided they wanted to continue the meeting to Thursday to give a couple of other items before they'd make a formal recommendation. So the purpose of the memo was, ideally, that would have been in this staff report. But because it was, the timing was off, it was basically given updates saying, hey, the ATC gave us some specific things they'd like to incorporate. We reviewed them all, we were happy, we think they're all good suggestions. And that they did have a formal motion to recommend adoption of the plan to council when it comes to them in February. So those are just the specific items they wanted to make sure. We have a lot of other kind of miscellaneous editorial and formatting changes that they've requested and that we're working on, too. But that was the intent of that, was just to communicate.
Be sure that they're, they move forward. Good, let me just highlight one item. There was just one brilliant idea, I just can't resist. And that is the notion that when we, we've had so many projects where the bicycle parking is upstairs in a building somewhere. And this suggestion is that we, we require automatic doors to be installed on the first floor so that you can open those doors without, you know, when you only have two hands on your bike. And certainly easier on the bike and easier on the person. And the other recommendation I'd love to see in our zoning ordinance is that that bike parking be on the first floor. This idea of taking your bikes up several stories just never has made sense to me. So I'm really excited to see those. Well, good, let's, let's stop here and go and I'd like to ask the city, Assistant City Clerk for public comments.
All right. Thank you, Chair. So we do have one request so far right now to speak and it's Molly Kern. So Molly, I'm going to go ahead and unmute your microphone. And it looks like you're self muted, so if you could just turn that on.
Hello, Commissioners. This is Molly Kern, I'm speaking to you on behalf of the San Luis Civil Expo Chamber of Commerce. We are in support of the draft plan that you're looking at tonight. As it's based in prioritizing actions really that are proven to get people to bike and walk. And back since, I think it was last fall when we began working with staff and learning about how this is going to come together. That has continued to be a top priority for our board and volunteers on our economic development committee. I really want to draw the focus on major arterials, closing gaps for safe and really attractive citywide circulation and augmenting some of the bike and pedestrian safety infrastructure as we improve other road improvements, things like repaving and sealing. The work by the Active Transportation Committee, we think is really commendable. They have been so diligent in setting appropriate prioritization criteria and investigating the proposed projects so that they can elevate those that have the highest likelihood, again, of really helping achieve the city's ambitious and worthy mode share goals. We believe that the draft contains policies that improve safety for pedestrians and cyclists, which in turn will also make driving better for our community and will benefit businesses, their employees and our community as a whole. So I just want to share those comments and say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kern, it's beautiful. So Megan, are there any other comments that have, anyone else in the queue at this point?
No, I don't see any other comments.
Well, I'll bring it back to the board, the commission, and we'll go from there. So have we made enough comments as well? We've had some comments buried in our questions and we all did that a little. Are we ready for a motion? We have several parts to it. One is to recommend that the council approve the plan and also we need to adopt a negative declaration of environmental impact. Who's ready for a motion? To make a motion. Commissioner Hopkins.
I'll take a stab at it. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve the active transportation plan and adopt a negative declaration of environmental impact for the project.
Commissioner Khan, seconds. Is there further discussion?
I have a comment on that. Should we also on the motion recommend including the document we just discussed from Public Works Director Matt Horn into the document? Is that what we're supposed to do?
I think I just asked that question and I guess I had the sense it was going to be incorporated, we didn't actually.
Okay, that, those, those comments are referenced in the ATC's motion and recommendation to council. So that's already on the record of things that we are asked to incorporate into the plan. So you don't necessarily have to reference that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Shoresman.
Do we need to add any of the, any of the other suggestions, like the ones you made about the, or were those already incorporated in the ATC's comments about the opening doors and the first floor? First floor bike parking?
They were incorporated, I just couldn't resist highlighting them. Good, I think then we're ready to do this. I can't resist saying, this is, this is a beautiful plan and the best part of it is how strategic it is. And you've fessed right up to the strategies, you've articulated, clearly this is very transparent. We can't please everybody all the time, but we really go get and go protected lanes. I can't wait to see some more, as quick as we can do them. So I think Assistant City Clerk, I think we're ready to, to vote on this motion.
Thank you, Chair. Commissioner Hopkins?
Yes.
Commissioner Khan?
Yes.
Commissioner Quincy?
Yes.
Commissioner Shoresman?
Yes.
And Vice Chair Jorgensen?
Yes. So we've done it, congratulations, very nicely done. A lot of work, it's easy to see. So the last. A lot of work. It's easy to see. So the last item tonight is staff updates and agenda forecast.
All right. Thank you, Vice Chair Jorgensen, members of the commission. It's been a very productive year. I sent out kind of the goals that you saw kind of finalized. I also sent out that report that kind of highlights some of the accomplishments we've seen this year. And it's pretty, it's pretty impressive. Looking back, I just wanted to acknowledge that. All the things we're able to do, all the big projects that have come through your review. Very technical, very detailed, and just wanted to say thanks and a great job that you guys were able to get through all that this year. So you know, and that's in addition to everything else that we've all been dealing with. Both on a professional and personal level. So thanks for all your dedication and hard work. Great stuff. So with that, we have a little bit of a break, which I think we can all use. This is our last meeting of the year and our next meeting isn't until January 27. And so that'll give, that'll give staff and I think and the commission a little time to catch up on some things as well as be prepared for the new year. On the agenda for 127, we do already have a few items. One item is kind of a confirmation. This one's interesting. It's a confirmation of an action that was, that took place back in the eighties on location of the urban reserve line as it relates to Sarah San Luis and some properties off of Broad Street. And so this is one where it came to our attention that the current location of the urban reserve line may not be in the, in the right location. City Attorney's Office, along with other community development staff has done some additional research and agree that that is the case based on our findings. And so we'll be bringing that forward. There is no formal application from like an applicant. This is just a city initiated confirmation that this was the intent of the council action back at that time. But we think we have the evidence to support that. So we'll be bringing that forward for confirmation. We also have North Broad Park at 533 Broad. This is a general plan amendment in rezone. Currently zoned conservation open space, looking to rezone to public facility. And this would allow for a new park at that North Broad Park as you enter the on-ramp on Broad Street heading south. So the property to the right, I think it's currently a, a, a community garden. So there's some plans in place for that, as well as a third item, which is the Bullock Ranch. It's out in the Orchid Area Specific Plan. And this is a housing development project that includes 192 units. So that will also be coming before you as well. So right now, those are the three we have. We also have some items tentatively scheduled, obviously in our February's, but I don't want to get into the details of those at this time because that's a little bit a ways away and things will likely change. But that's what I have and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
I don't see anyone ready for questions. I will have to comment. The light's not really good in the room you're in. And has your hair turned totally gray from all the work?
It is gray. It's been a long year. Yeah, I don't know. The lighting in this room is probably the best I can offer you guys tonight.
Well, thank you so much for how much you've done. We've somehow survived it ourselves, I guess. Commissioner Shoresman?
Yeah, just a question about calendar schedule. I mean, I know that generally we're on the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month. Is there, are there any weird dates that we need to be aware of that you know of right now, at least in 2021, where our meetings are off schedule or we have special meetings or, I don't know, is just curious if you had anything like that.
I do. So we do have the calendar for planning commission meetings for 2021. And when I'm from from what you're saying, Commissioner Shoresman, you haven't received our calendar. So I will send you all kind of our calendar. So you'll have that. Mostly it is what you would expect, the second and fourth Wednesdays. But I think when we have those holidays and other times like we saw this year in November, I think we only have one meeting in November again. And there may only be one meeting in December. So I'll, I'll send you guys that calendar so you have it for reference.
Thank you. That'd be helpful.
Thank you. So I think we're good here. Let me quickly make Tyler already announced this, but the regular meeting of the planning commission, the next one will be scheduled for Wednesday, January 27, 2021 at 6:00 PM via teleconference. So I think if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.
Happy New Years, everybody.
Thanks everyone. Happy holidays.
Happy New Years, happy holidays.
Thanks everyone. Great, great job.